Okay, podium test mic one, two, three. Podium test mic, test mic one, two, three. Manager mic testing one, two, three. Manager mic testing one, two, three. Clerk mic testing one, two, three. County clerk mic test one, two, three. Attorney mic testing one, two, three. Attorney mic testing one, two, three. Meitzner mic testing one, two, three. Meitzner mic check one, two, three. Dennis mic testing one, two, three. Dennis mic check one, two, three. Beatty mic testing one, two, three. Beatty mic check one, two, three. Lopez mic testing one, two, three. Lopez mic check one, two, three. Howe mic, whoop, there we go.
We're going to be starting in little over a minute, so stand by.
Testing, here we go. Howe mic check one, two, three.
Okay, stand by, I've got about 45 seconds.
Howe mic testing one, two, three.
30 seconds. 30 seconds. 30 seconds.
Okay, stand by, I got about forty-five seconds. Thirty seconds. Fifteen seconds. Here we go, ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five.
Well, good morning, welcome to the Board of County Commissioner meeting for Wednesday, April third, two thousand and twenty-four. We're glad you're joining us, those that are joining online, or those that are joining on KPTS, and those that are here in person. When you walked in this morning, you could have got a meeting agenda packet. You can always go online to SedgwickCounty.org too, and you can see all the support material that's on there. Makes for great reading. But we're glad you're here and you're joining us this morning. There are some special guests that I'd like to specifically welcome. Wichita City Council member Becky Tuttle, glad you're joining us today. Former Wichita City Council member Levonta Williams, so glad you're here. Mayor of Kechai is here, Ashley Balasquez, good to see you. And then our former county councillor, the proud KU Law alumni, Mike Papoun is here today. Fan favorite, so. We're glad everybody's here today. So I'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Invitation to be led by Pastor John Dursa with Calvary Baptist Church, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let's pray. Dear God in heaven, we are so thankful for your power, your authority over us. We're so thankful for giving us God's Word, the Bible that guides us. Lord, I know that as individuals, our goal is to submit to you, and Lord, I pray that even with, as it says in Romans thirteen, that we would submit to the governing authorities over us, and we're so thankful for each one of these men and women who guide us in government. I pray that you would just bless them, that you would bestow your blessing on them, that you protect them, give them great wisdom and guidance, even in the decisions that are made today. And I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you Pastor John, appreciate you greatly. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. The Sedgwick County Fire District One is currently under the state of Kansas imposed burn ban during the month of April. The ban includes all open burning of any waste, including vegetation and wood waste, structures or other materials on any premises. Excuse me. We've put together a short video on the burn ban, and the Fire District One Chief Doug Williams is here to comment and answer any questions.
Every spring in Kansas, farmers and ranchers used controlled burns to eliminate weeds, reduce the risk of wildfires sparked by lightning, and to put nutrients back into the soil. But smoke from these prescribed fires can also damage our air quality. That's why many counties, including Sedgwick, have burn bans in place during the month of April. Any outside open burning without a permit is not allowed. This includes trash fires, brush pile burns, and lagoon burns. Only controlled burns in agricultural settings will be permitted in Sedgwick County during April. If you live in the city limits of Wichita, Valley Center, Derby, or another municipality in Sedgwick County, be sure to check their burn regulations too. They may have a separate process for burn permits. To learn more, visit the Sedgwick County Fire District One website. Burn wisely this spring, and protect the air we breathe.
Good morning, Chief, what's on your mind?
Good morning Commissioners, Doug Williams, Fire Chief. Yeah, we just wanted to go over a couple of the points of the burn ban, so that if anybody has any questions, that hopefully it kind of answers it. But it does include the whole month of April, all the way to the end, and the ban includes any open burning of waste, including vegetation, wood waste, structures, or any material on any premises. There are, there is an exception. The exception of the burn ban would include agricultural-type burning, which would be a pasture or crop management, or wildlife, and watershed management. So those things are still allowed, however, you do have to get a permit to get those in the agriculture burn. And also, the burn ban doesn't include barbecue grills, or the smokers, or the backyard fire pits. So we just want to make sure that, that if anybody has any questions, that they can get those answers on our website.
Okay. Chief, where do you get a permit? How does someone go about getting a permit?
They can go on our website, it's online.
SedgwickCounty.org?
Yeah, and if they can't access that, they can stop by a fire station, and generally our crews there can help them.
Very good. Any other questions for Chief? Saying none. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Chief. For today's county good news, I'd like to invite CFO Lindsay Pureso. She's going to discuss the recent Small Business Administration audit that was given to Interest Bank Arena. Cam?
Good morning, Lindsay.
Good morning, Chairman.
Chief Financial Officer.
Yes, it's never good when the Commissioners laugh, when they tell you I'm coming to the podium. Oh, rude. Not surprised. Okay, so for the record, Lindsay Pureso, your CFO. I am delighted to be here to talk about some excellent news. So the Commission is well aware that the Interest Bank Arena received through the county ten million dollars from the shuttered venues operators grant back in two thousand and twenty-one. That was spent to speed up some capital improvement projects. It also erased the operating deficit that the county was on the hook for, for operations in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. That was due to some tremendous work by A.J. Beleski, the General Manager of the Interest Bank Arena. I'm going to note that the reason he's not here with you today to talk is because he's actually working the concession stand for this morning's hockey game. So just a true excellent manager. So we're grateful to him and his team for their work. Also, Rob Hogan with DRS, and then some phenomenal staff in finance, including Brent Shelton, your Deputy CFO, and Michelle Strout, your Revenue Manager. We have now gone through a couple of county audits, but most importantly, the U.S. Small Business Administration has now completed their audit of that program, and we have received a perfectly clean opinion. It is done, it is closed out, and from their perspective, we are done. So huge congratulations to the Commission for setting those parameters, and enabling that support for us to have from outside entities to help us get through this. And then a huge congratulations to all involved. It's very exciting news, especially when you hear about all the bad news with all the COVID money that was out there. This is just a real testament to the arena folks and this organization. So thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Very good, Lindsay. Please extend our congrats and special thanks to A.J. and the team over there.
I sure will.
To your staff as well, for what you guys do with Interest Bank Arena, we appreciate you.
All right, thank you.
Other questions or comments for Lindsay? Okay, thank you.
That's all I have for today.
Okay. Anything else for Nicole? Very good. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Okay, we did have a few people sign up for Public Agenda. Just call your name, and if you just come on over here, we'll give you, just a few people today, so we'll give you five minutes. When you get to the podium, if you can announce your name and address for the record, that'd be helpful. And our friendly clerk here, when you get to thirty seconds, she's going to hold up a sign, and then that beeper will go off and the time's up. And she's really kind and really sweet, but I'll remind you that the time's up, and we'll try to nudge you along. But first on the list, Dr. Walt Chapel, sorry.
Watch all these steps.
Yes, good morning, sir.
Very good. Walt Chapel, for the record, live in Wichita, Kansas. I've had a handout I wanted to make sure each of you folks had before we start. Has some information here about the various solar projects that are done around the country. It's an interactive map. I'm gonna hold it up for just a second here. The URL is at the bottom, and you can sort the information here by the size of the project, where it's located, and so forth. You'll see there are about two hundred and sixty-some projects already, large-scale solar across the country. Many of these are near urban areas, and I would ask that you take a look at some of those examples, as you make your decision about how you want to move forward. Another is the little schematic here, it shows that if you have an acre of corn, how much mileage you're going to get with an internal combustion engine. And it says about four hundred and fifty gallons of ethanol, about nine thousand miles. But for that same acre of land that you use for photovoltaics, you get one million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand miles with electric vehicle. So we have a number of questions about how do we use land, and what benefit will it have. For our county, we're going to need to have several things to move forward and protect our economic growth. One is water, which of course we use a lot for growing corn, or ethanol. And secondly, is electricity. If we're going to have a chance to have our businesses grow, and our lights on in our houses, we'll need that electricity. So one of God's laws is simple, you have to have enough surface area to get enough sunlight to produce that electricity. And so the action is one that you're going to be thinking through. A minimum of seven hundred and fifty acres will give you about a hundred megawatts of power. Now, if you go up to three or four hundred megawatts, then of course you need about two hundred, excuse me, two thousand, three thousand acres. But the point that I'm trying to get to is that in Sedgwick County, we have only three substations. I mentioned this one time before. But that's only about one percent of the land use, would be for solar to produce close to probably six hundred to seven hundred megawatts of electricity. Now, that's going to be a blessing for our county, and it'll be very good use of land. And I encourage you to take a look at existing examples of zoning requirements and the regulations that are being used across the country. Instead of reinventing the wheel, take a look at places that have already been able to successfully use solar, and have it compatible with urban growth in their areas. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Chapel. Any questions or comments? Saying none. Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Appreciate your time.
Next up, Suzanne, and forgive me, I'm not able to read the last name, is it Hanley? That would probably be for the award, I would imagine, so. Okay, let's wait then. And then Jennifer Connelly.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jennifer Connelly, and I just wanted to talk about the experts that we had, and we serve so many different ways in, right here, you're serving, and we serve in the military, we serve for counties, we come to meetings, we do all kinds of ways to serve our communities. And I think the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission was serving us well. I think the people in the city were serving us well. And I know a lot of them weren't at the last meeting that we were at, to answer your questions, and you had so many questions. I was hoping that you would have talked to them ahead of time, to get all of your questions answered. Because I, if I understand, you're the ones who picked them. And you picked these experts that are supposed to give you good information, and come up with good questions for them. I may be wrong, you may have not answered those questions ahead of time, maybe they didn't have the answers. But just because they weren't at a public meeting, doesn't mean that they don't have good sense. And I feel like you just took all their information, and wadded it up in a ball, by saying that somebody else outside of the community can come in here and, and talk to you about what's going on. I just think that it's sad that we don't think that they have the expert knowledge to do the job that they spent months and hours, and, and gave their dedication to. And I'm hoping that you'll reconsider what's going on. And if you are using an outside company, are they the same as what we have? Are they our expert? Are we paying taxpayer money for this? What is their knowledge about solar? Do they know all the questions? We just had a man that just came up to the podium, that knows a lot of information. He's not on the board or anything, but he is concerned. He's a very good citizen of this community. And we need to take into consideration our citizens in our community, instead of going outside of the county and getting this expert information. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for your insight and feedback. Any questions or comments? Saying none. Okay, that concludes the public comment section. I'm so sorry, we're going to try to keep it going. Thank you so much. I'll make a motion to receive and file. I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay. Commissioners, we've all had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes of March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Any questions or comments? Saying none, I'll make a motion to, to receive the meeting minutes of March, and approve the meeting minutes of March sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations, Item B, Proclamation Declaring National Public Health Week.
Okay, National Public Health Week. I've asked Commissioner Dennis to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I'm going to read a proclamation of Sedgwick County, Kansas. Whereas, the week of April first to the seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, is National Public Health Week. And this year's theme promotes protecting, connecting, and thriving. We are all public health. And the ways our communities flourish, when their needs are met, through access to essential health services and nutritious foods, and whereas individuals can help control their health by choosing a healthy diet, avoiding tobacco, maintaining an active lifestyle, receiving annual immunizations and preventative checkups, and preparing their families and homes for emergencies. And whereas every day, public health professionals work tirelessly to reinforce those messages, and do their part to influence change. And whereas, one of Sedgwick County's Health Department Public Health Champions, Dr. Doreen Frederickson, passed away in two thousand and eight, after dedicating his life to improving health of the Sedgwick County community. And whereas, his legacy, and that of many other public health champions, such as one of my favorite persons, Sonia Armbruster, who's in the audience today, are commemorated through the Doreen Frederickson Lifetime Commitment to Public Health Award. Now therefore be it resolved that Chairman Ryan K. Beatty and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize April first to the seventh, two thousand and twenty-four as National Public Health Week in Sedgwick County, and invite Adrian Byrne, Director of the Health Department for Sedgwick County, to come forward for the presentation of this year's Doreen Frederickson Lifetime Commitment to Public Health Award. Commissioners, you've all heard the proclamation, move to approve.
A second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye.
And here to accept is Adrian Byrne. Welcome.
Welcome. Good morning, Adrian.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and Board of Health. It's really great to see so many of my public health friends and colleagues here today. So I'm happy to be here this morning as we celebrate National Public Health Week, and present this year's recipient of the Doreen Frederickson's Commitment to Public Health Award. Since nineteen ninety-five, the American Public Health Association has brought together communities across the United States to observe National Public Health Week, a time to recognize public health contributions in our community. At Sedgwick County Health Department, one of the ways that we celebrate National Public Health Week is by awarding the Doreen Frederickson Commitment to Public Health Award. The Doreen Frederickson Award was created in two thousand and ten to honor and recognize the late Dr. Frederickson, whose dedication, passion, and commitment to public health was second to none. This award is presented to an individual who has demonstrated a passion for improving community health, similar to the dedication Dr. Frederickson showed in the, to the community during his lifetime. This year's recipient is Sonia Armbruster, who Shelley Rich nominated. If I reviewed the list of Sonia's accomplishments in the twenty-two-plus years she's been dedicated to public health, we'd be here for a very, very long time. Between two thousand and three, which is when I met Sonia, and two thousand and thirteen, she worked at the Sedgwick County Health Department in various roles, including Health Promotion Coordinator and Director of Community Health Planning and Performance Improvement. Sonia developed WSU's Community Engagement Center. Sonia has been a health science educator at Wichita State University's Department of Public Science, an adjunct faculty at KU School of Medicine Wichita, and Butler Community College. Sonia has been involved, or been the lead, in several public health publications, and is a local, state, and national presenter. In addition to teaching, writing publications, and presenting at conferences, twelve years ago, Sonia became a private public health consultant, focusing on performance management and performance improvement. Did I mention she's got a lot of energy? So I know receiving this award is extremely meaningful for Sonia, who had the opportunity to work with and know Dr. Frederickson. Sonia's passion, commitment, and dedication to public health are on par with Dr. Frederickson's. Sonia is very humble in her accomplishments. When I called Sonia a couple weeks ago, she thought I was calling just to chat, or talk about something juicy. And when she realized that it was about this award, she was speechless. Sonia being speechless is like me being speechless. It doesn't happen very often. It is my true honor to present the Dr. Frederickson's Lifetime Commitment to Public Health to my good friend.
Thank you, Adrian. Good morning, Commissioners, esteemed guests, my fellow public health advocates. I'm deeply honored and profoundly humbled to accept this Doreen Frederickson Commitment to Public Health Award. There are ten previous recipients of this award, and I had the good fortune to know them all, some as acquaintances, and some as true mentors and friends. I first met Doreen Frederickson when he was recruiting graduate students in Communication Studies at Wichita State, me, and others, to help with a project that was about trying to help more children get access to care. And he provided me my first job in public health, and was the springboard to my second job in public health, working at the Sedgwick County Health Department. His legacy and life have been an inspiration to me, and to many of my colleagues who are here today. He was a tireless advocate for anyone, and especially for those who are experiencing less in the world. And he made an indelible mark on our system. And more than anything today, I think that we can see that, because he has shaped the next generation of public health advocates. We are here celebrating National Public Health Week, and the theme this year is of protecting, connecting, and thriving. And I just wanted to pause for a little bit to talk about connecting. When we connect with each other, whether it's our neighbors, or our coworkers, or our elected officials, we can build those relationships that protect our health and enrich our lives. When I worked at the county, I had the good fortune of learning about leadership from Bill Buchanan, and he encouraged me to buy this book, You Don't Have to Do It Alone. I can't think of anything I've ever done alone. I'm thankful today that my amazing parents, Glenn and Marty Armbruster, are here to celebrate with me. I'm thankful to have my always supportive spouse, who's also a great chauffeur. There are a few friends here too, from KU, from Wichita State, from the county, from coalition work, from the city. It's an honor to have them with here, here with me. The work I've been a part of for the last twenty-three years has been made possible through public health colleagues who led, who followed, who encouraged, who challenged my own thinking. And I'm thankful for those connections. Last, I want to especially thank Shelley Rich, the facilitator of the Health and Wellness Coalition, for nominating me for this award. She's doing great work to lead this community and create more collaborations and connections. There is a broad community of committed public health professionals within the Health Department, and within the coalitions and the universities in this community, who support the health of the community, and support you, the Board of Health. Together, we are ready to facilitate those connections that promote the thriving of this community, because none of us has to do this alone. As we look to the future, let us continue to create conditions where everyone has an opportunity to thrive in good health. Let us break down barriers to access, and strive for health equity for all. And let us never lose sight of the profound impact that our collective commitment to public health can have on shaping a brighter, and healthier, and more resilient future for the generations to come. Once again, I'm deeply honored and grateful. I extend my heartfelt appreciation to Adrian Byrne and her staff at the Health Department for reviving this tradition. Through the continuation of this award, the local community can recommit ourselves to carrying forward this legacy from Doreen Frederickson with the same passion and dedication. Thank you to everyone who's supported me on this journey, and thank you for this recognition today.
Sonia, hang on one moment. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. And Sonia, thank you for being here today, especially when you're surrounded by so many other professionals that are doing a great job that could have been recognized today.
Yes.
Because I've had an opportunity to work with all of them in the past. So just, just to see that you're singled out among such a great number of individuals that are trying to protect the health of our community, is a great testament to what you've done. In addition, you've done all that while having to take care of Mike Papoun, which I think is probably a full-time job. We appreciate you very much. We hated to see you all move to Manhattan. We're looking forward to staying there as often as we can when we go up to the games and so forth. So thank you for all the invitations. But again, the folks that are working health are working behind the scenes. You don't see them every day. But they are doing so much to make sure that we protect the health of our community. So thank you not only to yourself, but everyone else in this room that's doing a tremendous job to protect the citizens of Sedgwick County. Thank you, Sonia.
Very good.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. You and Janet are always welcome at our house.
Very good. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you. Sonia, well deserved, and many congrats from everybody. I'd just like to share, it's been, it's been nice. When I first met you, I was in public office myself, then moved from the city to the county, and you came in and helped me learn. And I think my first question was, we're in charge of public health? I don't... And so it was always easy to just agree, and to every grant, and everything that public health did, I thought, well, it's just, it's just part of our job. And then this little thing called COVID hit. And you were one of a handful of really valuable people, as the chair during that time, to lean on, when we're all in a new, a new world of who knows what, public health. So I want to thank you for being a resource to lean on during those incredibly difficult times, and valuable, and we've grown to have a great friendship. So my congrats, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here. Congratulations. I'm completely, you deserve this award, and I'm just so grateful that we can celebrate that with you today. We met at the height of COVID. And so really, getting to know you, and to hear your passion, and to see what you were doing, and your why, it was just, it was so inspiring for me, coming from the health industry, knowing that there are people like you, working with our electeds, to try to help guide them in their decision-making process. It was just exceptional to have the opportunity to get to know you, and some of your colleagues that are in the audience today. So I just want you to know how much we appreciate the work that you did before COVID, during COVID, and continue to do now after. It is so needed, and we see you, and we appreciate you, and just thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner Howe.
Sonia, thank you for, for being here, and being a good example to all of us on how to care for people. I mean that sincerely. I think that's one thing that really stands out about you to me, is that you truly do care about people. And I think that's well noted here by the audience, and by the things that have been said already today. I think we should also, we should all learn from that, if you will. You're a great example to all of us. And we may not always agree on exactly the policy, that's okay. I do appreciate you as a person, that I think you are driven... I think you are driven because you care for people. And I guess that's my takeaway today. Actually, I'm surprised you haven't received this award before now. I thought for sure you would be one that would have got this award a long time ago, perhaps. But congratulations and well deserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sonia, you've had a profound impact, and a lot of people in this room are here to recognize that and to honor you today. And honor it is because you have done great things. So we're grateful and appreciative of you. Congratulations. We want to get some pictures, if that's okay. So everyone from Team Sonia and this proclamation, if you could just hang out just a few minutes. We've got another proclamation that's incredibly important that we would like to read through. And then I think we're all going to take about a five-minute break and head out there and get some good pictures on the steps, too. So if you just give us a few minutes, we'll work through this. So again, congratulations. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, Proclamation Declaring Child Abuse Prevention Month.
A proclamation declaring child abuse prevention month. Whereas children are our nation's most vulnerable members, as well as our nation's most valuable resources, helping to shape the future of Sedgwick County, and whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every community in the United States, it can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations of their family. And whereas positive childhood experiences, like loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships, can help mitigate trauma and negative impacts of adverse childhood experiences to help promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas we acknowledge that in order to solve the public health issue of abuse and neglect, we must work together to change hearts and mindsets through storytelling and sharing, center the needs of families, break down bias and barriers, and inspire action from expected and unexpected partners in prevention. And whereas we are committed to advancing equitable, responsive, and effective systems that ensure all children and families are healthy and thriving, we recognize the need to prioritize kids and invest in more prevention initiatives like home visiting and family strengthening policies and community-based child abuse preventive programs at the national, state, and local levels. Now, therefore, it be resolved that I, Chairman Ryan K. Beatty, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize April 2024 is National Child Abuse Prevention Month here in Sedgwick County, and we urge all citizens to recognize this month by building a narrative of hope for children and families through collaboration and the creation of an ecosystem of primary prevention that does not currently exist in this community.
Commissioners, you've heard this proclamation. I make a motion to accept it as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And here to accept this proclamation is Rachel Harper from the Prevent Child Abuse Kansas. She's the Assistant Director and also the Kansas Children's Service League.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners and Chairman, for inviting us here today and for signing the proclamation declaring April Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'm Rachel Harper, the Assistant Director of Prevent Child Abuse Kansas at Kansas Children's Service League. Kansas was the first chapter, was the first state to have its own chapter 48 years ago. April has been recognized as Child Abuse Prevention Month since 1983. The blue pinwheel, I'd like to show that, all of the Commissioners have one, became the symbol for child abuse prevention in 2008. The pinwheel represents the happy, the healthy, happy childhoods that we all desire to see. The theme for Child Abuse Prevention Month this year is Building a Hopeful Future Together. We at KCSL strive to build a hopeful future every day in the work we do with families, agencies, and government at all levels. Each day is an opportunity to build the foundation for our future. Prevent Child Abuse Kansas and prevention advocates across the state are poised to provide families with what they need before they are in crisis. But we know we can't do this alone. We all have a role to play as healthy partners in our communities. We all have a responsibility to ensure children have positive childhood experiences and help families have the resources they need, again, when they need them. Community support and partnerships can help lighten the burden on families. Policies and programs that put families first built all of us up during uncertain, stressful times. Expanding family-friendly policies, like paid sick leave and family leave, help reduce the stress on our parents and caregivers. Children who live in families with access to economic and concrete supports are less likely to experience abuse and neglect. Positive childhood experiences help to mitigate the effects of adverse childhood experiences and build healthy families and strong communities. During the past year, KCSL and partners have worked hard to continue building a strong community in Sedgwick County. KCSL opened our Family Resource Center last July and have worked with over 100 families to date to support their needs and connect them to the needed resources. The Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention, WCCAP, has focused on several data-to-action projects. One project focused on a 600% increase during the pandemic of online predators. The Child Advocacy Center of Sedgwick County, as the lead agency of the WCCAP Community Awareness Work Group, created tip cards for parents and professionals to raise awareness. After discovery of an increase in over-the-counter medication overdoses at Wesley, such as Tylenol at Wesley Hospital, Wesley worked at WCCAP to create posters for education and awareness. The Child Work Group headed by Tanya Bullock, Child Start CEO, worked to get Wichita childcare regulation changed through the leadership of Becky Tuttle, City Commissioner in Sedgwick County. Prevention is hard work, but it is also hard work. To celebrate Child Abuse Prevention Month, you can plant a pinwheel garden, again, a visual reminder of the world we want for our children to grow up happy, healthy, and prepared to succeed. You can also join us in wearing blue on Friday for National Wear Blue Day for Child Abuse Prevention Month. And then on April 16th is Prevent Child Abuse America's Nationwide Digital Advocacy Day. Contact your members of Congress to advocate for increased support and funding for child abuse prevention programs. Please reach out to KCSL for details. Also, follow Kansas Children's Service League on social media. We will use the hashtag BuildingHopefulFuturesforAllofourChildAbusePreventionMonths. I'd also like to invite any members of the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention to stand and to be recognized as a part of this important work that we do.
Very good. Questions or comments from the bench? Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here today. This is, obviously, it's great to be able to celebrate and bring awareness to this, but it's a really hard conversation to have when you really get into the depth of what this means. And so I had the opportunity to come tour your new facility a handful of months ago, and it just, what you do there is incredible and how well you connect families to the resources they need. So just thank you for that work that you guys do day in and out. Rose actually invited me to your playgroup date, so my twins and I will be there at the end of this month, and so I'm really excited to be able to bring them. And, you know, when I came into your facility, I wasn't sure what the feeling would be, and it really is just this hopeful, uplifting group of people who just genuinely care. So it's just, it's incredible that you guys do this work. And Sedgwick County is doing our part to bring awareness, not only with this proclamation, but we are lighting the historic courthouse blue this whole month. So as you drive by and see that, it is blue for Child Prevention, or Abuse Prevention Month. So thank you for helping spread awarenesses. Thank you for the work that all of you do because it's just incredibly important and it means a whole lot to us.
Thank you. We'll be happy to see you there.
Yeah. Well, we are, Rachel, we're grateful for all the work you do. Just a couple of comments. The first is, I think it's, I think it's unique that these two proclamations are on the same day because we have to have a health department that is looking at the social determinants that are influencing some of the outcomes with child abuse. This is an important connect. One can't happen in this community without the other. So I think it's just incredibly representative of what this moment is to have both of these proclamations on the same day. The second thing is, I see the DCF Regional Coordinator, Dee Nice-Wongers, here. And to have DCF in this room, a new coordinator, a director for, I think, a year now, maybe a little over a year, that is involved in conversations outside of her role to how do we strengthen the family network in this community. It's refreshing to have a DCF coordinator that's having those conversations. It's incredibly refreshing. But not just how we best serve children that are in foster care from abusive or neglective homes, but how do we prevent children from entering into those situations to begin with by strengthening the family unit from preventative measures? I would just, publicly, I just want to say, to have a director of DCF that is saying that and doing that, and saying it publicly is refreshing. The third thing is, you talk about policies and family policies. As a reminder, this commission in this county has an eight-week paid parental leave policy here, not just for those mothers, but also for the other caregiver in the home, which also includes those that take foster kids. So we are leading the state in regards to a policy with paid parental leave, with eight weeks paid parental leave, and it's something we're incredibly proud, I'm incredibly proud of from this bench. Last but not least, you have a striking resemblance to our county clerk. Is there a relationship there?
Yes, there is. Actually, she is my daughter.
Your daughter does great work, and we're really proud and grateful for all the work she does. Reading some of these, reading some of this stuff sometimes is hard work, but she does great, and she's a great addition to this community.
I'm very proud of her.
So we are, too. We're proud of you, and we're grateful for what you do.
Thank you.
So thank you again.
Thank you.
Let's get some pictures because we want to honor this moment. If it's okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. We're going to head out to the stairs. So just wait for us and be on your best behavior. So just wait for us and be on your best behavior. Backing guys, put your microphones on.
I don't have access.
Oh, here. Always wanted to do that. Okay, we're going to get back to work. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments, Item D, resolution appointing Andre Bule to the Cedric County First District Citizens Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Wagner, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Justin Wagner, County Counselor. This particular item was a resolution appointing Andre Bule Jr. to Commissioner Meitzner's First District Citizens Advisory Board. Resolution is in order. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution.
Okay, Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Justin. Andre Bule is, I've had a chance to to meet and be with him recently on a number of occasions throughout the city, and he's expressed a great interest in serving. And I really am impressed. I love the fact that another young person is wanting to get involved. And as a almost the senior statesman on the commission, it's part of our duty, I think, to to continue to to engage when when somebody is interested as as Andre is. So it was an easy decision to approve him. So he is here, and so I'll make a motion that we approve Andre to be a part of our Citizens Advisory Board. Thank you.
Second that motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And Kelly Arnold was here to swear Andre.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Cedric County First District Citizens Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations. Good.
All right, well, Commissioner, first, I'm deeply honored, and I would like to thank the commission for my appointment, and I'm ready to serve. Thank you very much.
Yeah, very good.
And Andre, yeah, did you have a son that played basketball at?
Yes, sir.
High tie?
High tie, yes. Number 12.
Almost made it. They almost made it to the championship.
Thanks for reminding me.
Joe Hour. But Coach Joe Hour is a good friend, and he does a great job with with kids.
Great.
So I'm glad that you got to experience that as a as a parent as well.
Thank you. Next year, we got him.
You got it next year?
We got him next year, yes.
Okay, except be easy when you play capin', because we're, you know, we're just trying to be.
I can't.
All right, thanks, Andre.
Thank you.
You'll see Andre out and about at a lot of events in this community, and to know that he's willing to take this step now and formalize service on this cab, he's going to be a great addition to your cab. Commissioner Meitzner, you're fantastic, bud, and we're very grateful that you're here in what you're doing. So bless you, bud. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business, Item E, DER 2023-00017, amendment to the July 9, 2009 edition of the Wichita-Cedric County Unified Zoning Code adopted by the City of Wichita Ordinance Number 48-431 and Cedric County Resolution Number 137-09, as amended dealing with Article 3D6PP Renewable Energy Systems.
Very good. Hello, Scott Wadel.
Good morning. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. So this item, as you heard, is on today's agenda because it was deferred by the Board of County Commissioners at their meeting, at your meeting on March 6. At that time, the commission indicated the purpose was to have county staff look into procuring professional consultants with experience working with solar codes, and the intent was for the firm to share insights and recommendations regarding the zoning code and related to solar. On March 6, the Board of County Commissioners also extended the moratorium to September 13, 2024. That was done as a separate agenda item from from this case. With regards to the planning commission recommendation, the amendment and the recommendations for amendments to the Unified Zoning Code, the recommendation is still the same, and the potential alternatives identified in the staff report are still the same. So I will defer now to staff from the Counselor's Office and others to provide updates on the potential potential procurement effort and potential actions on this item related to that procurement.
Hello, Kirk.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Kirk Sponso, Deputy County Counselor. Following up on what Scott Wadel just presented, yes, there was a previous continuance or deferral on this item in order to procure, potentially procure, a consulting firm. As previously indicated, some of the focus on what the firm would be analyzing would first be the proposed changes made by the MAPC that are presented to the the board today. It would be review, analysis, insights as to the propriety of those potential code changes. We would also be looking to have them give insight, review, and analysis of potential changes that might be made based off of prior comments of interest made by the board. And then the third option, I think Commissioner Dennis has mentioned this multiple times, we don't know what we don't know. So their third prong of analysis would potentially being insight and analysis concerning what are standard regulations that are commonly implemented, categories or topics of interest that are commonly addressed when other municipalities look at potential regulations for these commercial solar projects. With that said, part of the analysis for procuring a consulting firm would be their ability to address those interests. Also, I think it's fair to say that credentials and past experience would be part of the consideration as well. I would say that we have engaged in communications and have conducted a meeting with a potential consulting firm in furtherance of this. There are ongoing negotiations, and I don't have a crystal ball, but I am optimistic that we could move swiftly to facilitate the analysis of the solar issue within the moratorium timeframe. If the board is looking to provide staff with an opportunity to continue engaging a consulting firm, you could defer the item before you today.
Okay, thank you for that summary. Any questions or comments for Kirk or Scott? Commissioner, do that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Now, I want to thank staff and everyone that's been involved in this every step of the way. This is an important issue that's going to impact the county for years to come, and we need to make sure that whatever decision we make is the right decision for the county today and for the future. We did defer this last month, this portion of it, on the adoption of zoning regulations. At this point, with the briefing that that our county counselor just provided to us, it looks like we're close to contracting with someone to do a national review to decide what kind of of items that we ought to include in our zoning regulations. So therefore, I do move that the board defer this item for two additional months to the next Board of County Commissioners meeting scheduled after June 4, 2024. And the deferral is meant to provide staff additional opportunity to attend a consulting firm and gain insight and recommendations as to appropriate changes to our Unified Zoning Code based on the comments made. There has been progress made by the staff, and I believe giving them more time to procure and review and do some analysis of services from a consulting firm is in the best interest of the county. We've already looked at some things like groundwater, urban development, size and configuration, size configuration limits. So there's a lot of things that we've started, but we haven't looked nationally to see what kind of items that should be included in all those. In addition, just as Kirk said, I've said it a number of times, I don't know what I don't know today. And we need to make sure that we take a look at all of the aspects that are involved in that. So therefore, I do believe that it's in our best interest to defer this for two additional months.
Okay, we have a motion, and I will second the motion. Any additional comments before we call the vote? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Item F, consideration of a resolution amending the debt financing policy.
Okay, we are awaiting Lindsey Poireaux, Chief Financial Officer.
Hello again, Chairman and Commissioners. Sorry for my delay. Item went a lot faster than I expected. So Commissioners, you have a debt management and financing policy before you for consideration. We'll talk through the considerations and some of the substantive changes from what this policy recommends compared to your old policy, but this is complemented by two other policies that are also on your consent agenda later today, and that includes the investment policy that deals with how we deal with bond proceeds as well as your capital improvement policy. So just a reminder, this commission has had a policy on the books since 1991 about how we handle debt, and we have consistently worked our way up in terms of overall credit ratings so that we are now positioned through S&amp;P, which is really the largest credit rating agency, to have had the best possible rating on many of our issuances for about the last decade. And so the driver behind the changes that we'll talk about today is taking steps to put into policy how we believe that we can best maintain that AAA credit rating. So it's no longer just focused on managing your debt, but also on preserving your financial creditworthiness to maintain that AAA. So with that in mind, the policy today is going to expand and be specifically applied to the county and its component units, which includes the public building commission and the fire district. That's both how those are reported out in our audit. And then the next major change has to do with the prior policy provisions that related to the maximum amounts of debt that the county could have. So again, while we're going to talk about some debt controls, that section has been completely swapped out from measuring debt maybe per person or the amount of debt from every taxing division per person, and instead focuses on the county's benchmarks as evaluated by S&amp;P. So the primary change has to do with replacing our categories with budgetary flexibility, liquidity, and debt levels. And so this new policy that has been developed with enormous amounts of input from our municipal advisor, from our bond counsel, from the county's debt management committee, has the following measures that we want to highlight that are being, that are replacing your current measures. For budgetary flexibility, we want to focus on the fact that within our general fund, we will maintain available unrestricted fund balance as a percentage of budgeted expenditures of at least 20% with a target of 30%. We're currently at 28%, so we're well situated for budgetary flexibility. For liquidity, which again is just making sure we have enough cash on hand essentially to pay our bills, there are two measures that S&amp;P evaluates us on. The first is whether we have total governmental available cash of at least 120% of our governmental funds expenditures and at least 20% of our total, or I'm sorry, that was our debt service, and then at least 20% of total governmental fund expenditures. As we've briefed you, I don't want to get into the details, but we are well above those minimums based on our current financing. And then finally, replacing those three or the five measures that we had before, the third measure in this one is our debt levels, and that is controlled by maintaining net direct debt at less than 60% of total governmental funds revenues, and then total governmental fund debt service at less than 8% of total governmental fund expenditures. And so when we look at the old measures compared to the new, we're still fairly similarly situated in terms of how much additional debt we can take on. However, this allows us to prove to S&amp;P through our planning process that we are taking this into account so that we can continue to assure our taxpayers that we are saving them as much money as possible when we're going through a debt process, preserving the lowest interest rates, and then giving them that assurance that an outside objective analysis is happening of our financials each year other than just our audit. So I'm happy to stand for any questions. Those are the primary highlights that are changes. If you don't have questions, then I recommend the commission authorize the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsey. I know that all of us have been briefed on this and had some considerable discussions. Are there any questions or comments for Lindsey? Okay, seeing none, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution and amended debt financing policy.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And Lindsey, this is, these are good reasonable things here, so we appreciate your leadership in them. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Item G, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on March 28, 2024.
Okay, great. Hi, Jamie, welcome.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Jamie O'Laughlin, Purchasing Department. The regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts held March 28, 2024 resulted in three items for which we're seeking your approval. The first item, 2024 NOVA chip R175-B for Public Works. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from Pearson Construction LLC in the amount Item two is on-call support for Justware for various departments. The recommendation is to extend the original contract term for one, oh, I'm sorry, to accept the original contract term for on-call support for Justware and to accept the quote with Pine Technologies LLC for a period of one year beginning July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 in the amount of $130,000. And finally, item three, two each unmarked police package SUVs for emergency medical services. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from Allen Samuel CDJR in the amount of And the approval of item three is contingent on the approval of item R on today's consent agenda.
Yes.
And with that being said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these items.
Okay, very good. I feel like making a motion to have you replace Joe permanently on these things, but we're all referring. Three items here, any questions or comments on this? Okay, very good. I will make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Thank you, Jamie. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we break for one moment? If you don't mind, Tom, we'll do fire agenda. Is that okay?
Okay.
So let's break before we do consent agenda, and I will call the meeting of the governing body of Fire District Number One, Wednesday, April 3, 2024. I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. First item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present.
Next item.
Public agenda.
No public agenda. Next item.
Consideration of minutes, Item A, fire meeting minutes of February 21, 2024.
Okay, Commissioners, we've all had a chance to review the meeting minutes. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the fire meeting minutes of February 21, 2024.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Stane.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Good morning, Chairman and Commission. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items B through E. I would point out that item C is the the policy Lindsey discovered, and we also have these similar policies on consent for the main agenda.
Okay, any questions on consent agenda for fire? Commissioner Howell.
Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and vote for this today, but I do want to have a brief discussion in public open meeting regarding the issue of tobacco use in county spaces, if you will. It's the same policy we'll have on regular agenda here in just a moment. Again, I'll vote for this in this case, but I do want to make some comments before I vote on item S of the regular agenda. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve consent agendas, item B through E.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Anything for other. So none, next item.
Executive session.
There is no executive session, so I will formally adjourn the meeting of the Fire District and reconvene us back to the Board of County Commissioner meeting. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Okay, Tom.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items H through X with the exception of item S, which Commissioner Howell just mentioned. I might mention that P, Q, and R are all of the finance policies that we just approved on the fire consent item as well, so we ask for approval of all of those.
Okay. Commissioner Howell, want to make the motion there? We'll exclude S and come back to it. Is that good?
That'd be great. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve consent items H through X with the exception of item S.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Back to item S.
All right, may I speak, Chairman?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So this precedes some of you on this bench, but I'd like to kind of visit an old topic. I'll probably go ahead and vote for this today, but before I do that, I wanted to talk a little bit about the issue of tobacco use in the in public, in county spaces. I just pulled some data to see whether this data has changed or not. Unfortunately, it has not changed. It's actually maybe worse. But we know that tobacco smoking, smoking tobacco specifically is is attributed for killing 480,000 Americans every year right now. That's our current stat. 480,000 Americans specifically from smoking tobacco. So if you want to think of the very worst thing you can do. So if you want to think of the very worst thing you can do for your health, then smoking tobacco would be the, probably the most likely thing you could do that would harm your health more than anything else. I, I sat in on a, a public hearing, informational hearing back when I was in the legislature on tobacco harm reduction. The topic, I haven't heard, I haven't heard THR discussed in a very, very long time. Other countries have spent more time talking about THR to the extent, I mean, Sweden was a, was a, was a world leader on this topic originally, many decades ago, actually, and they reduced the incidence of human death from smoking tobacco significantly by, by promoting, if you will, THR, by using other methods of nicotine, nicotine delivery. Again, nicotine is, is not good for your health. I'll just state that up front. I don't smoke, never have. I don't vape, never have. I think nicotine is, is generally detrimental to your health. It's not a good thing. Neither is sugar, and neither is caffeine. In fact, I'm drinking coffee right now. Enjoy the caffeine very much. Having said that, caffeine is a stimulant, much like nicotine. Nicotine is a stimulant. In fact, in large quantities, nicotine is considered a poison. If you ingest enough nicotine at one time, it could kill you. So there, I wouldn't say that there's no harms. In fact, one of the studies I'm looking at right now said there were 68 deaths in the U.S. related to vaping. Now, bear in mind, they, they include everything like batteries exploding in that, in that number. Also, it's not clear whether this is cumulative or whether that's a one-year number. I can't seem to get that data figured out yet. But nevertheless, if you, even if, even if it was for one year, which I don't think it is, and even if it was from using vaping materials, it would be 0.01% of the deaths compared to cigarette smoking. In addition to that, there are 16,000, excuse me, 16 million Americans right now that are suffering from the effects of cigarette smoking. There are, it's deemed that there are roughly four million Americans that are in the process of detrimental effects of smoking to the point that it's actually going to probably cause their death in a future year. So the, the amount of human suffering and death relates to human, to humans smoking tobacco cannot be underestimated. Does this make sense? I mean, it is, is by far the worst thing out there. We just had a nice presentation on public health. One thing that bothers me is the American Lung Association and the, and the American Cancer Society actually failed to do what I think they should do. If you really want to stop human suffering and death, you need to, you got to differentiate the data between what's really going to kill you and what is, is less dangerous than that. And I'm not, again, I'm not recommending that someone would in fact take up any type of nicotine ingestion, use or use because it is potentially detrimental to your health. Well, I do reckon, I do look at the data. I'm very data-driven, and I can tell you that the data between cigarette smoking, smoking tobacco, I should say, and vaping and nicotine ingestion is night and day. In fact, finally, the UK, the National Health, what's it called? The National Health Services, NHS, which is a UK equivalent of the National Institute of Health, I believe it is. So the UK has a National Health Services organization. They finally looked at, I think it was over 70 different studies, and they finally concluded that vaping is 95% less dangerous or less bad for your health than cigarette smoking. Finally made a conclusion. You can't ever prove a negative. I've said that before. You can't prove there's no harms. I would never say there's no harms. It's like I can't say there's no election fraud. There, I can't say there's no harms. But comparatively speaking, the data is, is night and day. And having said that, the problem we're trying to solve today with this policy is we have employees who are throwing cigarette butts or making ashes in the, in the vehicles or in the workplace. We have employees that are using chewing tobacco, and they're spitting here and there and making, maybe making a bit of a mess or leaving some of their, some of their spit is left behind, and so there is a problem for someone else to have to clean that up. And that is a problem. I don't think that's good for the workplace. Certainly is an image issue as well. Okay? I don't want people to be seen doing those things when they represent Sedgwick County as an organization. I want to be very professional and have a good image to, to the public that we serve. Having said that, policy I tried to advocate for back in, I think it was 2015, we adopted for one year, and then when the election happened in 2016, we immediately rescinded the policy, was I differentiated between cigarette smoking and vaping. One of the problems with cigarette smoking is we have many employees. I used to work at Boeing. I used to work at Textron, and they have, you know, the, the bell would go off and say it's break time. Everybody would run, a lot of employees would run outside and smoke real fast. They would smoke three cigarettes in 10, 15 minutes and come right back smelling like a ashtray. And right outside this very building, I walk outside this door, even though by state law they have to be, I think 50 feet from that door or whatever distance it is, the people smoking right by that door. I walk out that door, have to walk through a cloud of smoke. I don't like that. At least in the aircraft plants, they have break times, and those people that are addicted to cigarette smoking, they take their breaks and they smoke several cigarettes very quickly. And Textron, I think even at Spirit today, they have to leave company property. You'll see them right across the sidewalk or maybe driving off the property to go smoke a cigarette, and they come right back. We're not very regimented here in Sedgwick County with our employees, no offense to Mr. Manager, I think we're doing the best we can, but we have a lot of trust in our employees. They work in places where they're alone or with very small groups, and they take breaks when they want to take a break. I mean, you have, you need to go to the bathroom, you just go to the bathroom. No one has to wait for a break to go to the bathroom, right? They want to go out and smoke, they go out and smoke. And I've seen some employees out there smoking every hour, and I see them smoke from cigarette to, one cigarette right, right after the other. I observe this. So at the end of the day, we're, we're paying for health insurance, and I, I think if we're going to take a policy that says that cigarette smoking is bad for people's health and is costing taxpayers a lot of money, cigarette smoking is pretty bad for all of our employees. It is. And this policy might seem like it's positive policy that we're prohibiting, if you will, tobacco use in any of our spaces. The problem is, we're not changing behavior at all. I would rather, with the policy said back in 2015, I'm not going to recommend this today, but what the policy said was if you're going to use a, a flavorless, in other words, not an odorless vaping device, not in front of your, not in front of your coworkers and not in front of the citizens that we serve. But in a private space, we didn't have to leave the workplace because there's no odor, there's no secondhand smoke. If you don't know, there's four ingredients in vaping primarily. It's propylene glycol, which is a food additive. It's a baby food. It's okay for human consumption. There is vegetable glycerin, which is another food additive that's available in many foods that we eat and consume. There is flavor, which is optional. It doesn't have to have any flavor. Flavor does tend to bother some people. If, they might smell the flavor if someone's vaping near them, so they, again, the policy was odorless. And then there's, I believe, four MCG down to zero MCG. There are various amounts of nicotine that you can have in that. Some people are trying to use vaping as a way to, to get off of cigarettes. They may start at four MCG, and then they, they wean themselves off of the nicotine, and actually you can get zero MCG vaping. So you can have odorless and nicotine-free vaping. It still looks like cigarette smoking because they're inhaling something, and it, when they hit the exhaust, it comes out, looks like smoke. And that habit of people doing that thing with their hands and their mouth is actually one of the advantages of vaping to, for cessation versus gum and Shantex and hypnosis and other methods of trying to, to cessation. Back in that tobacco harm reduction informational briefing, it was stated at that time that about 5% or 6% of people who want to quit smoking are successful in doing that with everything under the sun. Shantex, by the way, is one that causes depression. Some people actually commit suicide when they're trying to stop smoking because of Shantex. They gain weight and other things that are negative to quitting, quitting smoking. But 5% to 6% success rate, people using all of those methods, the patches and everything else, gum, 5% to 6% of them are successful. And again, what these studies show from the United Kingdom is that the incidence is much, much higher of cessation of people actually have access to vaping versus cigarette smoking. One of the studies they just did most recently, which is very interesting to me, if you ask people anecdotally, what do they think? Is cigarette smoking and vaping equally harmful or which one's more harmful? The, the public opinion has changed. They believe that vaping is more harmful than cigarette smoking. By the way, cigarette smoking, if you are ingesting, if you will, combustible smoke, it has somewhere between 2,000 and 4,000 chemicals, 70 of which are known carcinogens. It causes heartening of the arteries. It causes throat cancer, mouth cancer, lung cancer, obviously, a heart attack, high blood pressure, and on it goes. There's a lot of really negative effects from cigarette smoking. Vaping, they ingest those up to four chemicals, and they exhaust, if you will, water vapor. Now, people say, well, there's, there's heavy metals in there. Yeah, niochrome wire, same as you have in your hair dryer, is the heating element, and you pull that, pull that chemical across that, there are trace elements that are exhausted, if you will, in a few parts per billion, and niochrome and, and formaldehyde, which by the way is generated in the body, not from the vaping, but you actually exhale it normally, as well as trace amounts of nicotine. But most of the nicotine is, is metabolized in the body, and you don't exhale the nicotine. So the idea of secondhand smoke is, is practically, again, I would say, zero risk to others. Having said that, I don't like this policy as it's currently written because it doesn't recognize the absolute truth. There's a major difference between cigarette smoking and even chewing tobacco versus vaping. And to our employees, if they are able to do this in a workplace where there doesn't, not around, not around coworkers, an odorless, an odorless product, rather than going outside and smoking three cigarettes in the rain very quickly, every hour on the hour and losing productivity, I'd rather have someone not smoke the cigarettes, and actually it's a better choice for their health. Every time they go out and smoke a cigarette, it's actually detrimental to their health. I've heard that every time you smoke a cigarette, it takes seven minutes off your life for something like that. As much time as you're actually smoking that cigarette, you shorten your life that much on average. At the end of the day, I, I don't think this policy reflects the data behind what I've described. Even, even the American Lung Association and the American Cancer Society, as well as our own national public health agencies, have ignored the data because it's politically popular. I say things sometimes that are not politically popular, but I am data-driven, and other countries around the world have moved in another direction. And in terms of it being an employer, recognizing the horrible harmful, harmful effects of smoking tobacco, I would really not want to tell people, and our employees especially, that these two things are equivalent because they're just not. And again, the UK has actually concluded that, that vaping is 95% less harmful than cigarette smoking. By the way, I think that's a larger number, excuse me, a smaller number than it should be. I think that's much closer to 100% less harmful. But they're not going to say that. So anyway, I don't think this policy reflects the truth. If we really wanted to stop human suffering and death, that 480,000 Americans dying each and every year, we would get on board with the data as other countries around the world have done. The UK is actually beginning to recommend vaping to their people to stop them from cigarette smoking. Sweden's already done that, and incidence of lung cancer and other cancers has, has plummeted in other countries. So with that, I'll vote for the policy today, but I really think we are missing an opportunity. And again, back in 2015, it actually got us to actually adopt the policy, and as soon as the election happened, we immediately rescinded it. So I'm not going to even try that again today, but I don't like, I don't like to be politically popular. I want to be data-driven, and sometimes the data is not politically popular. That's, that's a, it's a good example of this today. The policy today will get the nasty stuff out of our vehicles. It's to step in the right direction, but I think we're missing the opportunity to say to our employees, we care about you deeply, and if we can do anything to help you stop cigarette smoking, we want to do what we can to help you do that. I don't think this policy reflects that today at all. Mr. Chairman, that's all I want to say. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Sure. Sure. Thanks. Other questions or comments on item S?
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve item S of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in two seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Legislative issues.
And with that, we have Ms. Tanya Col.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Happy to be here this morning for a legislative update. So this is the final week before first adjournment, which is this Friday. A few bills have gone before the governor for her consideration while others are in conference committee this week to resolve the differences between the Senate and House versions before Friday. The items that are mostly focused this week will be budget and a tax plan. So just want to name off a few of the bills that are headed to the governor after passing the Senate and House that are particular to our legislative platform. Senate Bill 362, which is our Sedgwick County Nuisance Abatement Act. Senate Bill 500, which is the bill that provides restricted driving privileges for certain individuals that fail to comply with traffic citation, that will be eligible now for restricted driving privileges such as driving to and from, dropping off, or picking up children from school or daycare or going to medical appointments. Those are a few of the examples that they will have driving privileges for.
What, what is that bill number again?
Sure. Senate Bill 500.
Okay.
And then House Bill 2754, those are the school inspections that will allow counties to utilize home rule authority to exempt out or make optional for local health officers. So those bills will be going to the governor for signature on those. Okay. Couple of bills that we will see movement on that have been agreed to by a conference committee, which is House Bill 2481. I think that bill number actually changed, but that is the Sedgwick County Zoo Play. So I think we'll get a positive movement on that. And then House Bill 2601, which is the third DUI, receiving multidisciplinary services. Some bills that we will not see any movement on this legislative session, so there may be some disappointment in some of these, and then some, we may have some relief or temporary relief on. House Bill 2723 and Senate Bill 552, those were the homeless infrastructure bills. We know for a fact that we're not going to see any movement on this year. Senate Bill 468, this would prohibit cities and counties that grant or approve certain property tax exemptions or TIF, tax increment financing from exceeding their revenue neutral rates for property tax. I think that is a relief to us. And then I sent an email last week, Senate Concurrent Resolution 1611, which would limit the increase in valuation on real property in Kansas to 4% per year, or the House Concurrent Resolution 5025, that one would change the valuation of residential property to a 10-year rolling average to determine the fair market value. Those will not move this year. So I think you get Jason Watkins' email. There was a nice article that he included yesterday, I think it was in the Sunflower Journal, on those particular concurrent resolutions. And then I'm going to pull up, if I can quickly, an email that Justin sent. He just heard this morning, so this happened very quickly. He heard this morning from Jay Hall that the government, and you'll recall, we talked about this last year, Government Competition Bill, which would exempt a business from property tax. This has kind of resurfaced, and so what's happening is, is that this is being, my understanding, this is being discussed in conference committee. this is being discussed in conference committee. And so Jay is asking if you all would weigh in. However, before I ask that we do that, I've reached out to Jason and Jessica and would like their input on this and kind of their understanding of where this is at and how we would want to reach out on this. So I've texted Jason and Jessica. Jessica responded back very quickly and said that they're working on it. So if I can get just a little bit more details, understand the bill a little bit better, and get some information back to you, then ask how we would want to weigh in with the legislature on this.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay, and those are all my updates. Happy to answer any questions or anything for you.
Okay, questions or comments for Tanya? Commissioner Meitzner.
Yep, thank you. Tanya, just in general, I just want to thank you for your due diligence through this seasonal process that is up there. So I know Commissioner Howe's got a lot of experience, and me and him have talked, and this has been a trying or a more unique than regular session, and it's required a lot of attention. I just want to thank you and our legal staff and everybody for being due diligent during this process. So have a happy last week of the legislative session.
Yeah. Commissioner Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have we heard anything at all about the dark story theory discussion?
Now that you mention that, I have not heard any updates, and I'm happy to reach out to Jason and Jessica on that.
Yeah, I'm a little surprised that hasn't come back up. I think that's one I would have expected to be inserted potentially into one of these bills. Do we have a bill number for that Government Competition Bill?
Senate Bill 8, I think is what that is.
All right. I agree with the Chairman. This has been a very strange session, especially compared to last year. I think this year has been noteworthy, that things are just more threatening, I think, to local government than we've seen in the past. And so overall, I'm pleased that we did actually pass a few bills, three bills, it looks like. We have successes to celebrate, three bills. And we have another set of successes is staving off the passage of a number of bills, right? That is also a success. And so I think overall, we've been very successful this year. I guess I would ask our counselor today on that 2754, that school inspection exempt, we can exempt ourselves out of that. I think we did that before. We had some type of exemption we created by the county. Do we have to pass that again if we want to do that?
Justin White, our County Counselor. Commissioner Howe, that you're correct that we did have one of our prior charter resolutions. We had exempted ourselves out of those inspections. And so if that bill would pass, my understanding is that we would, once it becomes effective, the Board could seek to adopt a charter resolution that would, again, exempt us out of those inspections.
So we'd have to repeat that vote.
That's correct.
It would be my desire to see that drafted up, ready to be presented to the Commission because, again, we have, I believe, was it, I believe, 12 different school districts, public school districts coming into Sedgwick County. We have a lot of private schools, and I'm not really that concerned about any of those, but we also, under Kansas law, home schools are considered private schools. And so at the end of the day, that law, as it currently sits, I think, does open the door to having government inspectors, if you will, go into people's homes. I would never support that. I think at the end of the day, I'm not sure there's any private school or any public school in Sedgwick County that feels like we need to insert ourselves into their business. And if they want us to inspect on their behalf, I'm sure they could request us to provide that help. I have no doubt we'd be glad to help them, but the idea that we have a legislative or Kansas legal right, if you will, to step into their business, I don't like it one bit. So I'd like to see that presented to the Commission for consideration.
We can prepare that, Commissioner.
All right, thank you so much. Again, thank you for all your great work, and I'm glad this is almost over.
Thank you.
Well, I want to concur and just say thank you to you and all of those in Sedgwick County Government and working so hard on this, particularly Counselor's Office. This is, you're on the home stretch. I think there's times, I've explained it this way, there's times that we play offense, there's times we play defense. And I think we got a couple of bullets in our chamber. One of them certainly is Jason Watkins and his team up there. I think they are fantastic representatives and lobbyists for what we, for our offense and our defense, and they keep us in the loop. They have been sensational. Very impressed with their group. The second thing is, relationally, I think all of us work really hard to keep and maintain a good relationship with our legislative delegation, South Central Legislative Delegation. I think that goes a long ways for what we're trying to accomplish here, and having that communication, I think, is important. I would say that as we get into the next year's legislative agenda, there's already things in my mind that I want to contend for, but I would ask us to explore the opportunity to bring in our South Central delegation in well ahead of time, and actually having a conversation about how do we shape our legislative platform together and really get their input while we're shaping. And I know we did some of that a little bit this year, but to actually have a roundtable discussion of some sorts, to let them have input on this and explain to them face-to-face exactly why we're contending for some of these issues, I think it would be unique and I think it'd be helpful.
Justin?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to take a minute to recognize Adrian Clark specifically for all her work on the legislative platform. There's been a number of bills that she's been very instrumental in analyzing, helping draft legislative comment. She's done yeoman's work.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Adrian. Okay.
Commissioners, and if I can just add on to what Justin said, I do appreciate your gratitude, but this legislative session, I did receive a lot of help from a lot of department heads and from legal staff, and so I just want to pass that gratitude along.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Lots in legislative issues. Madam Clerk, next item.
Committee reports.
Any committee reports? Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. I just have one. So Don Scheppler with the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition spoke at the Second District Cab last night and reminded me, and I just want to make sure that we share with everybody, and I'm sure we'll have more information out soon, but there will be a community health update from the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition at South High School on April 25th at 6 o'clock, 6 to 8. So hopefully, we can get some of that pushed out over our socials so more people can be aware of that and hopefully have a good turnout, but wanted to make sure that I stated that that is coming up soon.
Very good. Appreciate that. Other committee reports? Okay, next item.
Other.
Anything under other? Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Last Friday, March 29th, Commissioner Howe and I went over to recognize the Vietnam veterans that have served our country. March 29th marks the last day that the last military soldier came out of Vietnam, so we recognize it each year on that day. We want to also recognize the sacrifice. There are 58,220 names on the Vietnam Wall. Eight of those are females, and the majority of those names on the wall are people that are under 22 years old. So our younger generation was really bearing the brunt of that fight. But most importantly, millions actually served over there, and they didn't get recognition when they came back to the States, and that's one of the reasons we have honor flight and we appreciate what they do. But more importantly, is that out of all of those that served over there, today only 30% are still alive. That's a terrible statistic. When you think of the ages that they went over there and the ages that they should be today, that we still only have 30%. So health problems are significant due to the effects of certain things like Agent Orange that they were fighting under. So I sincerely appreciate each and every individual that's ever served in any capacity in the United States military, but I want to extend my sincere appreciation to the Vietnam veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. That reminded me, I did want to mention that on Saturday, Hayesville did a memorial for Larry Tyson, who's a Vietnam veteran, and for all the Vietnam veterans as well. And I met with Bill Gale, who's a chaplain of VFW 6957, and he has Vietnam Veteran lapel pins. So if anybody has served or has family who has served or knows someone who serves and they don't have that, please let me know, and I'd be happy to connect you with Bill, and he can get you that because we need to make sure that our Vietnam veterans, especially, just as Commissioner Dennis said, get that recognition because they absolutely deserve it, so do their families. So anybody who might want that or need it, please let me know and happy to help any way that I can. Thank you.
That's great. Wonderful. I will just make mention another, that tomorrow, 1:00 PM, the Sedgwick County Commission is formally having an en banc with the Wichita City Council. 1:00 at Wichita City Hall. It's the first en banc since 2019, is that correct?
21.
21. Kind of regretful. We're going to talk about a few things. We're going to talk about the historical and current state of functional consolidations between the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County, talk about things that are working well, maybe things that aren't working so well, and have an open dialogue about that. We're also going to talk about a potential opportunity concerning cultural arts, recreation, and park departments, get a presentation from PPMC in that regard, and then we'll have an open discussion regarding other potential opportunities for efficient business models in our relationship. So there's some practical things we're going to be discussing tomorrow, but there's also, in my opinion, the symbolic nature of what will take place tomorrow, is I think that our constituents in this community needs to see Sedgwick County government and city of Wichita government sitting in a room and having a discussion on creative opportunities. There will be likely no binding action taken tomorrow, I can't imagine, but the discussion is incredibly important to bring these topics to the public and to engage our public on potential opportunities. So that's tomorrow, 1:00 at Wichita City Hall. It's an open public meeting. I'm looking forward to those discussions. Anything else under other? Okay, saying none. Next item, please.
Executive session.
And we have no executive session, correct? Okay, being said, we are done today. Any other business needs to come before the Commission? It's 10:39. I was developing a reputation that I didn't like of wrong meetings, so I appreciate getting done today at 10:39. And I appreciate all of you and all of our staff and those that were here with us today. That being said, we are officially adjourned.